convene the public session of the Norco City Council, report of actions taken in closed session to city attorney.
Yes, the city council considered the matter listed on the agenda under closed session, and there are no reportable actions.
Okay, we have the pledge of allegiance and the invocation by council member Newton. Remain standing.
Thank you, Mayor. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening. So, Mr. Mayor, if I could have a small sidebar. At our last council meeting, we had a discussion item going on, and then electricity went off momentarily. So, with me doing the invocation, I have a concern about floods and locusts. And so what I did was, I realized that I need professional help, and I reached out to my cousin, who is a priest at the University of Notre Dame. So, I want to give him partial credit. We worked on this together. Thank you, John. And bless you. Lord, we ask that we be mindful of your presence as we begin our meeting tonight. Direct all of our deliberations by your law, calling us to love our neighbor, and by your spirit of love within us all. Grant us wisdom as we seek your will, a sense of justice in all our decisions, insight and action beyond our interests alone, and harmony in the midst of any disagreements. Bless our council members, our staff, and our citizens who look to us for recourse in their daily struggles. Amen.
Okay, tonight, we have an introduction of our new Riverside County Fire Chief, Weiser. On August 3rd, 2020, the California Department of Forestry appointed Chief Bill Weiser as the Cal Fire Riverside Unit Chief. We are lucky to have him with us tonight. Welcome to Norco, Chief Weiser. Please come up and introduce yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it. Mr. Mayor, city council, the city manager, it's a pleasure to be here in beautiful Norco tonight. I just wanted to put a face on the name. There's no agenda or anything like that, except if you have any questions for me, I gave some cards to the city clerk already, that he'll make sure that you are able to have. My door is always open to anyone here, and that it is an honor and a pleasure to be part of a fire department that is proudly serving the city of Norco and the citizens here. Thank you so much. Do you have any questions for me?
Yes, sir, I got one.
Yes, sir.
These other guys that are here sometimes, I think their name is Bike and Lane.
Yes, sir.
When they go to one fire, they usually have a three-week vacation. Is your schedule like that, or?
No, it's not currently, but I'm looking at their time cards. I forgot how I can do the same thing. I think it's a great idea. I'm looking to try to double that, duplicate that. I think it's a great idea.
No, you've had, we've had good battalion chiefs here ever since Cal Fire came aboard, and we appreciate everything. They work with us and everything, and I think they're still going up north.
They both are. Both Chief Bike and Lane are up north, and, but you, Jeff Burrows just took a strike team out as well, I think, three days ago. He went and relieved a guy and had to go and go up north himself.
Okay, so he left too, then?
He did. He did. Right now, currently, Riverside County Fire Department, along with, you know, Riverside County Fire Department is unique. They would take state, county, and city resources like yours and shove them all together and make this great fire department. That is what we are. So, right now, we currently have thirty-five engines out fighting fires outside this county. And so those are comprised in strike teams. Those are five engines, and those five engines need a leader to go with them, and we use our battalion chiefs to go do that. So, they rotate on and off to be able to do that.
Right, right. Well, they're, like I said, you've always had good personnel here, and we appreciate it.
You bet. Thank you.
Anybody else got anything to add?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think you ought to advise the chief that, you know, if he doesn't show up and tell him about the cutout, we have Scott Lane and the abuse that that takes.
We should have brought that tonight, yes. We have a cutout of...
A full-life cutout of Scott Lane.
Scott Lane, and it usually sits in a chair in his memory when he's around here.
I, I would like to actually see that cutout.
I've got a...
Very good.
I happen to have a, I happen to have a video on my phone, I'll show you after the meeting, where he actually rode a bull the whole parade route one year in the parade. Me and Newton was driving the wagon, and Scott was in there with us, riding the bull down the parade route.
Well, I...
You've got to be careful around here.
I guess so. I think I'm going to have to go right now. I don't want to be caught in something like that. Again, thank you all.
Yeah, I do, I just want to remind you that you're more than welcome to come out when we get to train again for the Norco Animal Rescue Team. If you want to learn how to put up the tripod and do that and stuff, we'd be more than happy to have another hand in there.
I'd like to watch it, but I don't know if I'm the guy to put the tripod.
That's all right.
You want someone with skills.
Well, we're certainly happy to have you aboard, chief, and come over and see us anytime.
Thank you very much.
And I'll show you that video one of these days.
I'd like to see it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next item is the city council communications reports on regional boards. Mayor Pro Tem Bash will start it with you.
The only thing I really have to report that's of interest is the Riverside Conservation Authority is looking to go under the umbrella of the RTC, RCTC, so that they would become a board in and of themselves underneath. We'd no longer have a, we'd still have the same commission, but we would have the director, Ann, or whoever's at the head of RCTC would be our director, and she would oversee activities. The reason for this is the County of Riverside no longer wants to cover pensions and liabilities for those types of organizations. And we discovered that when we went out to try to get a director, because our old director left, we couldn't guarantee that we have those kind of benefits. So, this is kind of a win-win. It'll streamline the organization. It still will be considered literally the best type, this type of organization for conservation in the nation. And that's going to take the next few months. The process is going to be, if RCTC takes it on, if they don't, then what would happen is we would just simply stay RCA, and then they have to figure out a way for the staff to fund pensions and things like that. So, I, I think it's a good move. I had a long talk with Andy, and Andy was able to sort of fill me in on the pros and cons of the whole thing, so I appreciated that. And that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Grundmeyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the Corona Norco School Committee meeting on the fourteenth. Norco Intermediate, if you have not driven past that location in a while, has gone through an extreme facelift to what it was before, and not having the students on campus has actually allowed them to kind of move a little bit faster, I think. So, the completion actually is going to be June of '21, and so that's really good and extent, that's okay. That's really exciting news, so that, you know, August of next year, the students will be into a new facility. They're actually already occupying part of the administrative building over at the school right now, so. And then the other thing that I think is pertinent that we talked about was that our SROs are, you'll see them on campus. I know at Norco High School, we've had the SRO there, and they're working with site administrators, working, monitoring social media, and doing wellness or welfare checks as well. So, positive meeting, I think, the other day, and that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Hoffman.
Okay, what I have in front of you is for the rest of the council, the minutes of the Western Community Energy Meeting. One of the things I wanted to highlight on that was the, the bill collection and bad debt updated prior, that was provided. With the COVID and the unemployment, things like that, at the last meeting, we did notice there is an increase with failure to pay in your bills and stuff like that. So, we're just going to have to keep cognizant of that, and I know the city of Paris has come up with a help for their people. But though something that Andy was on the meeting too, it's a Zoom meeting, so we're all aware of it, but something we just have to look out for is those people that have not paying bills, especially on electric energy company that is just starting out. So, and then if you go to those slides, that NG program, I'll, I'm going to give that to somebody. I want to thank city staff and those who participated in Patriot Day. They came up. Andy, staff did an excellent job in that presentation and selecting of the speakers for that. And Lieutenant Pastor Phil hit a home run, or not a grand slam, with his presentation, so thank you very much for that, along with the fire guys. That was excellent for Patriot Day. Thanks. And then, again, Lieutenant Pastor Phil, he graciously allowed us to be at Grace Fellowship Church. This was done by citizens, First Responders Appreciation Celebration, that was organized by former commissioner, planning commissioner, John Rigler and his wife, Kathy. They did it there at the church, and I appreciate your guys coming out, lieutenant and chief, for coming out and being there as part of that program. It was a nice way for the community just to say thank you. Thank you. And then Bonnie would get mad at me if I didn't, as a Norco Horsemen Association member. To remind everybody of Candidates Night tomorrow night over at the drive-in at the Silver Lakes. So, and then the last one, Friday, and this is very special to me. As a Rotarian, we helped put up and fund that POW MIA monument at the park, and Friday is the third Friday of the month. That's National POW MIA Recognition Day. And my colleague here, Kevin, pointed out that one of the names on the wall that hasn't been, that we just put on there, Staff Sergeant Alfred James Homer, he was a POW at Camp O'Donnell in the Philippines. You want to read something very, it moves you when you read the number of Filipinos, Americans, and military personnel that died in those POW camps and during, that Japan had. It was amazing that we had anybody come out there alive. And he didn't. He died of his wounds. Just the atrocities that were there. So, and the fact that, you know, we still have almost eighty thousand people unaccounted for in the National POW MIA Day. So, the memorial will be open eight o'clock. We'll have the flags up. There's no ceremony, but I will have some information up there for people to know about the number of people that are still missing in action and unaccountable. So, that's, that's all. And thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Newton?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Thursday, September 3rd, right after our last council meeting, I attended the Chino Basin Desalter Board Authority, and no reportable action from there. Everything's just moving right along, and that's all I have. Thank you.
I didn't have any, any meetings since the last council meeting. I got one tomorrow for Vector and one next week for RTA. But I attended the nine eleven celebration up at, up at the memorial last Friday, and then that afternoon late, I went over to the church where we honored the first responders, and that was quite a turnout. I was really happy that that many people turned out to honor those first responders. And that's, that's all I have to report at this time. Thank you. All right, with that, we'll go into the city council consent items. All items listed under the consent counter are considered to be routine and may be enacted by one motion. Prior to the motion, to consider any action by the city council, any public comments or any of the council items will be heard. There will be no separate action unless members of the council or audience request specific items be removed from the consent counter. Items removed from the consent counter will be separately considered under item number three. Do we have any items that want to be, anybody want to pull any items?
D.
What?
D.
D. Okay, anybody else? Okay, wait just a minute. Have any speaker cards or emails to be read on these?
We have no speaker cards at this time, or emails.
Okay, so, we've got a motion and a second to approve the remainder vote.
Councilmember Grundmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bash? Mayor Hanna?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous?
Okay, item, item three is to discuss the items pulled, and Kevin, you pulled item D. You wanted...
No, Greg did.
Greg did, okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Todd, you're looking at me, so...
Evening, council.
Good evening. Understanding this is your, is Brian's presentation, you're the messenger on this for the most part, but you've got big shoulders.
We are a big team.
So, I have various questions that, and they may, they mount, may bounce back and forth.
Sure.
So, what you're asked, what we're showing right now is the measure our committee approved a budget of $230,826, and staff is asking for an increase of a hundred and three thousand, correct?
Correct.
Hundred and three, one thirty-three. And, and then going with your lowest responsible bid of two ninety-seven. So, I can't make the math work on this. So, if I take the two hundred and thirty thousand that was allocated, the lowest responsible bid of two ninety-seven, that's a difference of sixty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars. Then I add it, twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred is a ten percent contingency. That's based off of the two hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollar bid, and then the additional thirty-four hundred dollars in engineering. So, my total comes up with ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Okay. Let me see here. Yeah, so the total amount that was requested, the increase was one hundred and six, five, five, three, with the ten, I think the ten percent contingency is included in that, but...
Correct.
I didn't physically do the math.
Well, while Andy's doing the math, let me take you to the... Yeah, or twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred.
Twenty-nine thousand, yeah.
Right, and that's what I did. So, the difference, I don't want to belabor it. The difference between two ninety-seven and the two thirty, Andy, is sixty-six thousand, one seventy-four. Do we agree? Then I add twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred, and thirty-four hundred dollars for the additional engineering request. I come up with ninety-nine, two, seven, four. The ten percent is that twenty-nine thousand number. Okay, so, everybody in the audience watching on home, everything has got their calculators out, right? So, we're going to have a construction guy arguing with a CPA. Okay? Do you want my phone to use it as a calculator, Robin? I know.
You got your mic on, Andy?
Engineering cost.
Okay, so, moving on from that, no matter whose number is right, okay? Let's move to the last page to the resolution, since we're still talking about numbers. Andy and I both agreed that there was a sixty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollar difference between what was allocated and the lowest responsible bidder. In the resolution, it says lowest responsible bidder at two ninety-seven was seventy-three thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars over the construction balance of the budget. So, Todd, where do we get seventy-three thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars now? Or I guess that will defer to Andy's, since he did that. So, the resolution in the fourth whereas paragraph.
We've got that.
Okay. All right. So, that's my other discrepancy, is the seventy-three thousand. Still staying with some numbers, and Todd, this has kind of got me upset, and I've never seen this before, that we had eight bidders, fifty percent of them were deemed... never seen this before, that, uh, we had eight bidders, 50% of them were deemed, uh, non-responsive because of math errors. And we did not have the bid documents, you know, in, in our packet. But, to me, that's a red flag, to have 50% of your bidders making math errors where, when I look at this, I see math errors in the staff report, whether I'm correct or not. So, that to me is a concern. Part of that, if you can answer, is that the measure our committee allowed $7,200 for engineering in the original budget.
Correct.
This request of the 106, I make the assumption, did not go back to the measure our committee for, uh, at, at least even as a courtesy to ask for additional funding. That, I'm looking at it as council is at, you know, being asked to just bypass the measure our committee on this and allocate this funding. And that just bothers me from the intent of measure R, that, uh, I think this should have gone back to them. But...
Because that's, that's, the decision not to take it to measure R back, uh, was my decision.
Okay.
Uh, we've had that, uh, similar situation in the past. Uh, the role of measure R, our citizens oversight committee, uh, is to, uh, approve, review budgets, not, uh, projects.
Right.
And determine whether those, uh, uh, projects are appropriate for funding.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, when these budgets go to them, uh, uh, those are estimates that are provided for each of the budget item or capital project item, uh, that is provided. Um, uh, it is understood, at least by me and based on what we did previously, that, uh, that when the bids for these projects come back, uh, there is a potential for it to be, uh, over the budgeted, uh, the budget amount that is approved by measure R. I think we'll be, we'll probably go in circles here if every time that is, uh, we have a project that is being bid out and the bid comes back, uh, and the amount that is, uh, of the bid exceeds the, uh, the budget amount, that we go back to, uh, measure R to get it, um, uh, approved first, which may require, uh, scheduling of additional meeting, uh, for, uh, measure R committee to do that, uh, which in the end could end up delaying the project. Uh, so for that reason, plus the fact, I don't believe, uh, the role of measure R is to approve this, uh, uh, budget to the penny, that their role is primarily to...
And, and Andy, I, I agreed not to the penny, and, and I'm not questioning your decision on this. I think this is, to me, it's an accumulation of the whole report and the whole activity that, um, like I mentioned earlier, 50% of your bidders were rejected. The engineer's estimate is 30% over the, uh, responsible, one of the remaining bidders, okay? So, we're 30% over, um, in that cost. And, and so I think I'm just accumulating all of this, that maybe in those cases, I'm not worried about a few dollars when we're over budget or, or however we allocate that, but I think 30% is, is pretty substantial that maybe that's why it should have gone back. That, and I think there's, my guts telling me, there's something, the way this bid, this presentation was done, whether it was at measure R or when it went out to bid. And I, and I'll reiterate back, I've never seen that high of a percentage on rejected bids.
Or the mishaps, uh, non-responsive as opposed to, they, they did have the written word portion.
Yeah, words, words over numbers, absolutely. And, and I understand that. Um, but I guess that one trigger also is that one of those non-responsive bids is, after the numbers were adjusted, is $15,000 less than the original allocated 230,000. So, I'm getting to a point. I have a point here, okay? So...
Yeah, I can also add to that, because, uh, uh, we went to a, a great extent, uh, trying to determine what to do with this bid.
Mm-hmm.
I think Brian had, uh, several, and in fact, um, from when this bid came in, uh, to now, I believe it's been at least...
Been extended.
An extended time, I think.
Yeah.
And, and that was delayed because of this conversation, what to do with this, uh, situation. I think Brian had, uh, a discussion with the city attorney, uh, in terms of how we should approach this. And, uh, and the one approach would be to basically reject all these bids and go out and do another bid, and if that's what the city council desires, we're glad to do that. Or, uh, to, uh, make sure that we understand what the correct bid amount, what they intended to bid, uh, confirm those, and then, uh, uh, award it to the, uh, lowest responsible bidder. And in this case, again, not to, uh, delay the project, we decided to do that. Uh, if the, the, uh, lowest responsible bidder decides not to accept a contract, I suppose we do.
Yeah, I mean, those are the alternatives, and, and... Your microphone, John.
Uh, and you, you'll notice that the lowest bidder, uh, significantly underbid the cost of the units, I mean, the hard cost, which was the bulk of the difference. Uh, he didn't, when he said, "We're not going to award to you," it wasn't a matter of, "By God, there's my bid, I, you, you need to." It was, "Oops, I really screwed up."
Well, John, on, on...
I'm just talking.
Yeah, and, and I understand what you're saying there, but you've heard plenty of discussions that I've had with our director of public works, when we review a public bid, and they're listing out unit or line items where we've questioned, and I remember one on trail fencing, why are we paying $400 a foot for trail fencing, right? It's where they decided to plug their money on that line item. So, if that contractor, which they have to bond, they have a bid bond and, and a bond on that bid, if, if they want to have a lower unit cost on a certain unit, okay? But throw a higher number in, in another line item...
Yeah, their, their unit costs for the units, the, the physical units themselves were, you know, less than 50% of everybody else's. But that, but that said, what you're saying is absolutely right, and that's a discussion. We could have called, uh, recommend calling the bid bond.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and under the circumstances, just felt that, you know, I mean, the guy clearly screwed up and it, and there wasn't any downside to us, he would not have been the lowest, we, if we awarded to him, he wouldn't have performed. Uh, that the lowest responsible bidder appears to be legitimately the lowest responsible bidder. Uh, and we did let the guy off the hook and that we didn't take his bid bond.
Why not take his bid bond?
Uh, that's not my...
It's $30,000.
Yeah.
That, so, back, back on that, I want, I want Todd to answer a question here, so what... Why, why do we need it? Okay, so, we originally got $7,200...
The answer to any question he asks is, "Yes, sir, you're right."
Yeah. No, I don't want to hear that. Originally, we had $7,200 for the engineering.
Correct.
What in this scope of work, which is a pretty straightforward scope of work, pull a unit, put a new one on, why do we need another $3,400 in engineering?
I can answer that one.
Good.
So, we're good, all right.
Please do.
So, i- in the process of the reviews and, and us going through the process with the different, um, proposed contractors, we've had several RFIs where, um, some of the, um, it's 20-plus years old, a lot of these units.
Right.
Um, three of them are smaller, uh, mini-split for the, um, IT rooms, and the other ones are the larger ones. So, they sit on a decking, and we've had to go through, a lot of it we can't see per se, but a lot of the, um, we call it curbing.
Right.
Carrier provides a curb that we've had to go through and actually look into replacing several of those.
Okay.
So, we've incurred some extra costs in regards to engineering to, basically, which ones is it necessary for and others that we can, can utilize what's existing. So, that is a large portion of our concern with the engineering. And the, the, the safety net, that extra $3,400 is just kind of for unforeseens. Um, you know, the, the electrical theoretically should be pretty straightforward. But we've gone through and had to look at some of the different disconnects, uh, some of the stuff on the roof that are older in age, and we're just trying to be as, as efficient as possible and make sure everything's safe.
Okay, so on that curbing, originally, when you went out to bid, you met the engineer out here, put together the specifications, and did he do a structural evaluation at that time of the curbing?
Well, the curbing sits on top of the actual platform.
Right.
So, um, I, and I think Carrier has a little bit different one on the newer models, so, you know, we're somewhat outdated up there. So, I think we're trying to bring it up to the current specs. It's, that's, I think it's about half.
Good try, okay. All right. Uh, so let me ask you this then on the engineering. Uh, why, and also to be more competitive, why didn't the, and it's probably the question to the engineer, why could we not go Carrier or equal on, on the supply of these units? And then I'll give you my reasoning for the question, is that, um, Carrier also owns a, uh, another arm called Day and Night. It is the exact, absolutely the same unit, it's got a different logo on it. So, instead of specifying one, just Carrier only, why, why wasn't it specified Carrier or Equal?
Um, I don't have 100% straight answer, but I, my understanding would be just so we can have all of our quotes, I mean, if somebody quoted one and then the other, how do we keep it at a, a consistent level so everybody's bidding apples to apples?
Yep.
I know, I, I know there's different, I know, I know, because there's several different companies that have offshoots of different manufacturer, different title or name. And I, I don't have much more than that. I, I'm not, I don't want to blow smoke, but it's, uh...
I see Chad trying to jump in, but, or, or equal is just, they would put an RFI and the engineer would just say, "This is a comparable unit."
Correct.
And I, I can get it for less money.
Gotcha.
Okay. So, I think with, one last question, and then I, I can make my recommendation before my colleagues. On the contract, first page of the contract, under 2.1 contractor, it reads, "Contractor represents that it is experienced in replacing bay doors." What do bay doors have to do with this project in the contract that you're proposing to us tonight?
We caught that this afternoon. Um, I think it's from another, um, another version for something else. It didn't, it got overlooked.
We have, there's nothing associated with bay doors and...
Correct.
Replacing HVAC units. Okay.
Yeah, all right.
Got it. So, before any of my co, Berwin, do you want, wait for other, any of the comments, or Andy's still working on math?
Yeah, I went, I went back and looked at the numbers, and I'm actually correct. Um, the, uh, $73,000, uh, was derived by, uh, the, even though 230,826 was approved, the amount that was approved for construction is 223,567 on the face of the staff report, and 7,259 was for engineering, and that's the makeup of the 230. So, what the resolution is saying is that the bidder, uh, which is the amount of 297,000, um, if you subtract that, uh, if you subtract 223,567 from that, that's how the 73, uh, was derived at. So, um, if, so that's what that is saying.
Yes, the difference in construction cost.
Right.
And third-party engineering.
Well, then, there's something wrong with my calculator, but I'll leave my, my other comment is, when it comes to anything with math or anything like that, as far as arguing with you, Andy, debits equal credits, that's all I know. Okay? So, I'll stop at this point.
Right.
But, like I said, my overall concern is that the amount of bidders being rejected, that something does not sit right with this project, okay, the way it was presented, or how it was presented to the bidders. And at the very best case, it would be to continue this item off calendar, clean it all up, or what my gut tells me is, reject all these bids and rebid this project correctly.
Is that motion?
It, it can be, but I'd like to see if there's any other comments from anyone else.
So, uh, I think for me, number one is the, like Greg said, the number of bids that were thrown out, and one of them, you know, was eight cents off, um, a couple of them were substantially off, but I don't think we've ever received a list of bids, like, since I've been on council, a list of bids like this where this many were thrown out. So, I'm on the same page as Greg with that. And then, um, I understand, Andy, I think I understand that when this dollar amount was presented, and it says the 103 for construction, that the difference of the 72,5, uh, 7259 is kind of separated off, is that correct? And that's why? Okay. So, I get that now. Um, and then the same, you know, things that Greg brought up, when we're reading contracts and stuff, it's just attention to detail because unfortunately, the devil's in the details sometimes, and that's where you get hung up. So, um, I'm kind of leaning towards Greg with what Greg is recommending, just because it's one of those things, you can't put your finger on it, but it just seems off a little bit. So, that's all I have to say.
Kevin?
Ed?
Uh, I kind of like Greg's comments, and I agree that, I was going to pull this anyway. The, Andy, you made a comment about, and, and I understand why you wouldn't go back to measure our committee, but would the measure our committee, even if we were to approve this, would they get this back to them, at least so they can see the difference? Not, not as their approval, but just, just so that they would, okay, this is what we had to do.
So, one of the things we do too is, uh, we provide, uh, budget to actual report to measure R. And we also present them with, uh, budget amendments. So, at some point, uh, perhaps mid-year, uh, they will see this project, and they will see the amount that was, uh, they approved, and there'll be a request for them to increase that amount that was approved so that, uh, it will correspond to the amount that is being spent on this contract, if the contract ends up being awarded for that amount.
Okay, as long as they're aware of it. And Todd, if we reject all this, like Councilman Newton said, was how, how much is going to delay this project?
Um, to this point, we're real close to, I mean, not including the preparation of paperwork, the actual, since the RFP, I mean, this went out in, um, it says right here. It's been a couple of months. And our timeline is actually really good because we're looking at doing this kind of between the heat and the cold, because we are doing all the units at City Hall. So, the timing is kind of perfect. I mean, obviously, there's a lead time on getting all the units.
So, my guess is you're pushing this back four or six months?
Well, it's...
We have to go again.
And if we go again, I would believe, when, once the paperwork's correct and go through, it's probably, yeah, three, four months, three, three and a half months? I'm, I'm, I'm guessing. I just, there's a lead time usually anywhere from six to...
Okay, all right.
Six to eight weeks.
Hopefully, we'll be in the wintertime. Um, and I'm, I'm with you, Greg. We get bids all the time for stuff, and we may get one that somebody goofed up, but four is just way too many. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Unless you have any comments, I, um, I think we can improve on that timeline.
I'll agree with you on, uh, what you said.
And my, I'll make a motion to reject all bids and redo this proposal, dial it all in, and, and put the project back out to bid.
I'll second that. Anybody got any public comments?
There are no public comments for this item.
They were ready to vote.
Councilmember Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Hanna?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous?
Okay, well, that, we approved the rest of them, didn't we? Yep. Next item is public... Next item is, public comments. This is the time when persons viewing wishing to address the City Council regarding matters not on the agenda may be heard. Please email the city clerk, please limit comments to three minutes or less. The Ralph M. Brown Act limits the City Council's ability to respond to comments on non-agendized matters at the time such comments are made. The City Council shall not discuss or take action relative to any general public comment. So, we have any public speaker votes?
We have no public comments.
We have none, you said? Okay. All right, the next item is, that was item four, we're, I guess we're going to skip five, it says, okay, City's Council Discussion Items, Order of Presentation for Discussion Items. Number one is Staff Report Presentation. Number two is Council Questions of Staff. Number three is Public Speakers in Favor, Against, Against or Neutral. Number four is Council Discussion and Action. So, number A is Appointment to the Economic Develop Advisory Committee, City Clerk.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Tonight before you, we have a commission appointment for, we have actually two vacancies right now, one for EDAC, the Economic Development Advisory Council, which is one unscheduled, and then also one for the Historic Preservation Committee Commission. The requirements remain the same, that according to Municipal Code, Chapter 2.22040, you must be a citizen of the United States, be a permanent resident of the city, be at least 18 years of age, take and file with the city clerk the oath required by Section 36507 of the California Government Code, and no felony conviction. Recruitment, public notice was released on August 3, 2020. The application deadline has been continuous, because we have not been able to receive applications. We haven't had a lot of interest. We did a huge outreach through our social media, which did produce two applicants for our EDAC. We did not receive anything for our Historic Preservation Committee as of yet. The applicants that were received for the Economic Development Advisory Council for, has been Jeff Schu and Cecilia Uria. I do have, Jeff Schu is here to speak on his behalf. I did forward you Cecilia Uria's comments yesterday for you to review. So, I will have Jeff Schu come to the podium and speak on his behalf, and then when he is completed, you will have the ballots before you to go ahead and vote on your appointment. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, Jeff, you want to come up and speak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Seems like I've been here every single time in the last few months. I'm here in front of you today to put my name in for EDAC, primarily two reasons. In July, when I came here in front of you guys, Mayor Protem Bash said, if you don't get selected for this, I would recommend you to, to apply for other volunteer positions. And in August, the position opened up again for Planning Commission, I went for that. And really, the second reason for it was after that meeting, I did get a chance to talk to Councilman Hoffman, and I think the wording was that being in EDAC really allows you to kind of get a feel of the pulse of the, of the city. And that's something that really resonated with me. I still felt highly underqualified for it, as, at least compared to what I was going for with the Planning Commission. But since then, one of the things that occurred to me was, I think the first time I appeared in front of you guys was for the CarMax. There was a huge crowd here, and one of the things that, that stuck out to me was when Corinne came up here, and she spoke about all the information that came out of her involvement with EDAC, that I didn't feel that was really well communicated with the public. And a lot of those things resonated with me in terms of the, the business plan, and really kind of what it does for the city. And that's one, something that I think I would love to be able to be a part of, is that getting, getting involved in some of that business development, but not only that, but to be able to convey to the, to kind of our city, citywide, the reasons for that. And it's one of those things that I would love to be able to, if I was on the Advisory Council, to be able to put forth to the, to our public, kind of, here are the reasons why we are citing this way, and why we're advising the, the City Council this way, so that you guys have something to lean on as well, when, in the, in these. So, anyway, thank you for your time, and I have to apologize ahead, after this, after the vote, I have to run, because I have a 30, my wife is 34 weeks pregnant, and she sent me a list of things to bring back for her. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Is there the applicant in the audience?
No, she had submitted her comments to you yesterday.
Okay, all right, so I guess we're ready to vote then.
And it was unanimous vote for Jeff Schu with five. So, Jeff Schu will be appointed to the EDAC Committee, and you'll be receiving more information from me shortly.
Good luck. Thank you. Okay, moving right along. Item number seven is Public Hearings. Order of, Order of Appeal Hearing is Staff Presentation, Council Questions of Staff. Open the Public Hearing, Public Speakers in Favor, Against or Neutral. Close the Public Hearing, Council Discussion and Action. Item A is Approval of Development Agreement for Palomino Business Park, 116-acre project area, four phases with 2 million 50,000 square feet of new building space with up to 35 industrial office buildings and three commercial buildings. Interim Planning Director, that would be you, Alma.
That would be me.
How are you?
I'm well, how are you? Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, Agenda Item 7A is the Development Agreement for the Palomino Business Park. As the council may recall, that this project was approved earlier this year, so what you have before you is the Development Agreement. The, in a nutshell, the Development Agreement basically outlines the responsibilities of the city, and the developer, as far as impact fees, development impact fees, public and private improvements that need to be completed by the, by the developer, as part of the Phase One of the project, reimbursement by the city for those improvements that are done by the developer, but are not the responsibility of the developer, and public benefit contributions. So, just to again, give you a little bit of a summary, sorry, I have a pretty low voice, but, okay, I'll speak louder, and let me do this. The City Council may recall, the project was approved with the condition that the street improvements be provided around the perimeter of the project to the full city, city width. So, as far as on, on Park Ridge Avenue, excuse me, Pacific Avenue, the developer is responsible for the street improvements on the east side. Just a little bit. Street improvements on the east side of the street, adjacent to the project site. However, the developer will be provided the street improvements on the opposite side. On the opposite side, those are the, the street improvements that are reimbursed, reimbursable by, by the city accordingly, for the costs for those improvements. On Second Street, the developer is responsible, go forward a little bit. For Second Street, the developer is responsible for the street improvements, basically adjacent to the project site, but will be providing the street improvements on the opposite side. And as the City Council could see, the, on the opposite side, this is, this is what the developer is, or basically will be reimbursed accordingly to the costs involved. On Mountain Avenue, let's see, let's go back, oops. Go back to, there we go. On Mountain Avenue, the street improvements will be provided by the developer on both sides of the street. The, on, on both sides of the streets, there's no reimbursement by the city, however, with the exception of the horse trail. I don't know if you can see it, probably see it there better. On First Street, the developer is responsible for the street improvements adjacent to the project side, which is on the north side of First Street, and a portion of the south side of First Street. And on the other portion, which is right around here, there is, the, the developer will be providing those street improvements, but however, there are reimbursements by the city for the cost of those improvements. The, there are streets, there are three traffic signals that will be provided for the project. The two on the corner, Second Street and Mountain, and First and Mountain, those two traffic signals do, will include reimbursement by the city. The one in the center is going to be solely borrowed by the, by the developer. Let's see, and then moving right along. Public water lines, the developer is providing new public water mains on Mountain Avenue and First Street. The, the developer is responsible for the water line on Mountain Avenue, however, the, the one on First Street will be reimbursed by the city. And just in conclusion, there are also a public benefit contribution as part of the Development Agreement. Basically, in a nutshell, what's being proposed is public benefit contribution in the amount of 2 million to the city, to be used by the city for an illegal purposes. And lastly, the developer is proposing to contribute 240,000 to fund various improvements for Edingle's Park. And with that, I will conclude, the recommendation is, is that the City Council adopt the ordinance for the approval for the first reading of the ordinance. And with that, I will conclude. The developer is in the audience, and along, Chad is here to answer any questions as well, and I will conclude. Thank you.
Thank you, Alma. Does anybody have any questions, comments? Ted? Kevin?
I see that. Okay.
Robin? Okay, do we want to hear from the developer? Patrick?
Council, thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name's Patrick Daniels with Caprock Partners, and it's a privilege to be in front of you again this evening. Thought it might be helpful, just to highlight a few things, it seems to be an evening to talk about numbers, and, so I'm going to run through a few, but I will highlight just the few I'd like you to hold on to as we go through this. I'm going to run through a quick presentation, just walking about, through the jobs that will be created in this project, the millions of dollars in revenue that will be generated by the project for the city, the increased retail food and service demand from the jobs that are being created, and the economic impact of the construction, as well as the ongoing permanent jobs that will be created. There are over $18 million in fees that this project will be required to pay, 15 million, a little over 15 million directly to the city of Norco for a variety of different components to the city's coffers. There's almost $15 million in improvements that'll be installed immediately around the project to the benefit of our project, but also the surrounding community. We've also volunteered and will build a required and provide new horse trails, but we'll also volunteer to maintain those, even though they're in the public right of way. We'll do that as part of our ongoing maintenance to keep up the entire park. And as Alma's already talked about, there's over $2 million of, 2 million discretionary funds available to the city as part of the Development Agreement, and then 240,000 of miscellaneous improvements that are being offered up at the Memorial Park. Again, just a little background, so as a project comes forward, there's a multiplier effect of all the activity that occurs on a site. So, starting in the left, as the project is underway and being built, there's a lot of construction jobs being created in the construction and build out of the site. There are materials being purchased, obviously concrete, steel, and all the things, and landscaping to create the project. Many of those, we hope to be purchased in and around the immediate area. There's also taxes on those materials, taxes on the labor rates being paid and the employment of those construction workers. And then when they're coming to and from, there's a component, there's a percentage that will, you know, they'll buy their gas, you know, as they're coming to and from the job site. They'll maybe bring their lunch, but there's going to be days where they won't bring their lunch, and they'll run out and purchase those, hopefully up and down Hamner Avenue, to grab a quick lunch. So, there's a lot of different things as the project's being constructed, and then as you move along the bottom, and the project then is being occupied, companies are moving in, jobs being created, those employment, those jobs will then have, obviously, their salaries being paid to them as they work, they'll take some of those and provide for their families. Hopefully, many of those jobs will be hired here locally, as well as in the surrounding area immediately outside the city of Norco. And that'll spur other businesses in the area, even outside the business park. Again, we'll have also on the site, some retail that will be built to accommodate and provide services immediately in the business park, and then obviously, there's existing businesses already in the community, especially on Hamner Avenue, that will provide and meet the service needs, whether those are at Staples for office supplies, or even meals for meetings and things of that, that they'll perform. And then there's multiplier effects to that. Just to really make sure it's clearly, I'm going to read exactly what our consultant has analyzed here. And the study, this was shared with you prior to the City Council meeting in June, and, and so, the study that we employed a very highly qualified consultant to do, his study identifies the general economic impacts of the project on the county and the city. Economic impact studies operate under the basic assumption that any increase in spending resulting from a development project has direct, indirect, and induced effects. First, there is a direct effect caused by the additional output of goods and services on the site. Second, there's a ripple of indirect effects on all industries whose outputs are used by firms located within the project and by firm, various firms' supply chains. And then third, there are induced effects that arise when the employment increases in the region and stimulates greater household spending. In evaluating the economic impacts, the study incorporated two stages of the development process, obviously, construction, and then when that's completed, the overall operations. First, there's a one-time impact from the construction of the various types of land uses within the project. Then after the construction and tenant improvement phases are complete, the study determines the magnitude of the recurring impact on the economy through the ongoing operations of the development that has occurred on the project site. Now, I had shared this study upfront with Andy, who's very smart on fiscal matters, and I guess what I want to highlight from here is that we've all seen, and we've all benefited, we've got goalie Better Nutritionals coming in on the project that we completed up on Fifth Street. We've heard various estimates of how many jobs are going to be created. I first told you about the project... you know, like that, and bring them into this city. So I wanted to state, this is a very conservative projection that was put together. As a part of the construction, and I, this is probably half of what the consultant created because I questioned the assumptions, but even in his modified, after I reviewed it and Andy reviewed it with me, there's still a projection of over 925 construction-related jobs being a part of this build-out of this site. And then in the immediate area, there'll be an additional 339 jobs that'll be created, impacted as a part of that construction. Again, not on the site, but in and around it, obviously, with the buying of supplies, materials, services being provided. And then as I already mentioned, on the permanent side, the jobs we're forecasting in this study, over 1,320 permanent jobs to be created, and another 407 impacted in the immediate area associated with the jobs being employed on this site. So just real quick, running through this, as a part of this study, I think all of y'all, I think, got a copy of this back in June, but I just want to highlight this. Again, the one-time construction, the total economic input for the city is in green of $223 million. Again, the broader area, the 51.8 associated, and our annual ongoing economic benefit of over $151 million, total economic impact to the city, and then immediate area, another 58 and a half million. Annual recurring jobs, we've already touched on this, the 1,320 is the permanent on-site. The orange is the indirect related to the activity that'll be conducted inside the business park. And then as I mentioned in the outcome, there's induced jobs. So there's this additional ripple effect in the gray area of jobs that are being created and impacted with our development. So as a part of that, the annual recurring labor income, so there's an estimate of each job and what they'll pay, and again, these are all broad economic averages that are used, and in conjunction with the region, as well as overall state of California. So the city will have the benefit of the labor of people working here, the incomes that they'll be able to capture of over $62.8 million by the jobs being created here. The indirect in the yellow, and then the induced, again, the ripple, the third ripple effect of this project in green. Annual recurring economic input, so, output, so this is each and every year predominantly associated with the jobs being created on the site. Overall, on the city, the impact, again, the three ripple effects that we've talked about, that totals up to over $209 million of each annual recurring economic output in the immediate city, and then a broader, an additional 55 million in the broader county when that's added to the numbers. So that's each individual year. Construction-related jobs, again, this is the one-time impact. The city, on the right-hand side, there'll be over 1,200 jobs when you add up all three ripple effects, and then the broader county over 1,600 when you add up those three columns on the left. In construction-related, one time, based on the types of jobs that'll be conducted and building out of this project, on the right-hand side, the city will have the impact of $119 million of income associated with all the jobs, and then when you add in the county, that's another 25 million on the county and the surrounding region that'll be related to the construction. And then again, the one-time construction-related economic output, that's 200, almost 275 million on the right, and when you add in the county, it's over, almost just under $327 million of economic impact on the left-hand side. All that said, what I do want you to focus on, and this is the table, this is an analysis in conjunction with your city budget. This is the impact of the project on an annual basis related to tax revenues that the city will benefit from. This increase, this relates to sales tax, this relates to property tax, this relates to, again, the ripple effect of taxes on services and goods purchased as a part of this project during construction and the ongoing operation. So this is analysis of the additional revenue and the costs associated that the city will incur as a part of maintaining and providing services related to this project. So there's a net benefit to the city each year of over $780,000. This does not include the projection that was also included here for Measure R. Measure R, according to your budget and the way it was set up, is separate, and that's a separate calculation, separate category. That adds another $377,000 a year annually under Measure R. So when you add up each of those two numbers, it's over $1.16 million forecasted annually each and every year that the city will benefit once this project is up, running, and operating. As you have in the development agreement, and we've had numerous conversations, we're also voluntarily offering and providing $2 million to the city, fully discretionary to way, to any and which way that the city wants to apply those funds. We've also, as part of, as I've shared with you, I've, I've grown to really, really appreciate this community, so many things that are very unique and different, and really growing fond of this community, and I've, I've had a good teacher. And, and so we're very happy to add additional contributions for three very special projects to be funded. The first two, we hope would be, those are budgets shared with us that would fully fund those improvements, and the third is one that we hope will get that one off the ground and get it well underway for the ultimate, when the design is fully completed. So in summary, as we talked about, it is very conservatively projected that there would be over 1,700 permanent jobs associated with the development of this project. There would also be over 1,200 construction-related jobs one time, but as we build out and complete the construction of the project. We're going to generate millions of dollars annually, as I said, 1.16 when you add the increased values related to the project, and then those separately calculated under Measure R. So 1.16 million dollars forecasted. There's going to be increased retail, food and service demand, even on-site, as we will ultimately provide retail services there. We've already touched on the 18 million in total development fees, of which 15 million would go directly to the city and would help fund and enhance city streets, sewer, water, parks. There are some regional traffic impact fees to the Riverside County that's part of the 18, not part of the, I mean, the 15 goes directly to the city, and there are some on top that go to other agencies. School fees, even though we're not really adding residential, we're making a very large contribution to the schools in the area. And then there's miscellaneous administrative fees also as well. We talked about, and Alma touched on, the improvements to the local streets and mitigating traffic impacts that we are creating, but also will be fully improving the areas and enhancing many of the intersections that are already operating less efficiently even today. So we'll meet and take care of our impacts, but then we'll also enhance some of those traffic impacts that exist today, even with the full build-out of our project. We're going to provide horse trails on all four sides of the project, fully maintaining those as well as part of our costs, and then, as highlighted before, over $2 million in public contribution. We do appreciate your time this evening, appreciate your consideration, and happy to answer any questions.
Ted, you want to start? Kevin, thanks.
Yeah, I do. This is, when we first talked about this, and we, we were at a little meeting, um, and Chad, if you can help me on this, one of the things we talked about was the cost of, since only doing part of the road, half the road, and then our cost back. Chad and I had an interesting conversation about this, and Patrick was there. If you could elaborate, and Chad, if you feel, jump in, but Patrick, elaborate what the cost is for us putting those roads in versus you're putting the roads in and we're going to cost back. And what we talked about was prevailing wage and things like that, and your, your use of the union labors with their, with their higher, internationally, their high cost of wages, but that was a discrepancy, so if you could elaborate on that, I'd appreciate it.
No, it's, it's been good. We've had a good dialogue with everybody, so it's brought some things that we went back and made sure we had accurate understanding and able to clarify for each, each of our conversations. So yeah, one of the components, there's the opportunity to bid public or non-public, there's prevailing wage, union, non-union, and all those discussions. Candidly, as part of large projects like this, ongoing over time, we've gotten to know the Labor International Union, and they are very interested in industrial, large industrial projects. And so as a part of that, we've come to an understanding and agreement of some of their goals and objectives, and as well as ours. And so to retain the best qualified people who are going to build your project and meet the standards that are asked of us on many different components, whether that's the thickness of public streets, or, you know, meeting all the mitigation measures that came out of the environmental impact analysis, you're going to want to hire the best and most qualified people. And so as a part of that, there's a, much of our work on-site will be paid at prevailing union-related wages. And then when it comes to the right-of-way and the public improvements, the, the more particular work in the street that we're doing, you're not, you're, there's, there's not a big variety in the level of sophistication and training that is needed to operate the heavy equipment necessary to install those improvements. It's not somebody just operating a shovel. It's much more complicated than that, and meeting all of the compaction, other standards, and all the specifications and inspections that go on each and every day related to laying down each layer of that road improvement. So we will be paying union, more related union wages to get that work done. Also to the, with the magnitude of what we're doing, many times, we would want to phase in those improvements. And in our meetings with staff, that's never been an option, even though we've tried to go back and forth a few times. Chad's dug his heels in and said, "No, we are not phasing in, they're all going to be built up front." So when we go to bid that work of almost $15 million, there should be quantity discounts, you know, to bid all of that and do all that work at one time, of which the additional work the city's asking us to do will be incorporated in that, and would also be a benefit to the city in that magnitude of what's being built all up front and at one time. So, and then, I think, is that, I'm rambling a little bit, does that answer your questions, I think?
Yeah, it does, Patrick. And then Chad, if you could, because the conversation comes in is what Caprock pays for versus what the city will be responsible for, and the cost savings, one way or the other, if you could elaborate on that.
In regards to what Caprock would be, or the city would be obligated to pay for in this agreement, as far as Caprock doing all the physical construction work, the city's only going to be paying its fair share of the half-street improvements related to construction only. All the design and environmental work will be done by Caprock and not reimbursed by the city. So we're only physically going to pay for our fair share of physical construction that we would determine prior to going out to bid, the actual quantities and per bid item that's going to go out, so that we clearly understand ahead of time which items and quantities the city will be paying for when those bids come back, so we can adequately understand, once the bids come back, what our obligation will be going forward, subject to any potential change orders or issues that may occur in the field. So I always put that caveat. But we'll have a very good, clean understanding of exactly what our obligation should be based off those line items that come in. In regards to any benefit to the city, I think Patrick indicated correctly in that, you know, when you have a large quantity of materials that are being ordered and put together, you're going to get an economy of scale as far as that increase, potential, or, excuse me, potential savings. So I think there's certainly a benefit in having the half-streets that are not Caprock's obligation added in and done at the same time, there is an overall benefit in quantities that likely the bidders would reflect in their bids. In generalities, there is a difference, just to be clear, that normally, when you have a project that is non-pervailing wage, like a street work versus prevailing wage, you'd see about a 20% to 30% difference in bid pricing. And I had asked that question to a couple of different contractors that we use, that if they were bidding a street worker in some area that's non-pervailing wage, what would be the difference in their bidding? And they said it was about 20, maybe up to 30%, as far as the, the unit prices would be lower because they're not paying prevailing wage. But, and the reality is, is that any city work, any street, except other than private road, where if a resident was trying to get a price on a private road, for example, they might see a different cost. But again, the unit cost might be different because it's less material, so they lose there, and it's a smaller street. In this case, it's quite a bit of square footage that's being done, the unit prices should be driven, driven down pretty well, and because of the fact that Patrick's group is pretty much using, from what I can tell, union labor, prevailing wage, it's, 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 there's not, there's not going to be that issue, it's, it's pretty much going to be a prevailing wage job. There's only one way to bid it, because of the large scale and the quantity, so it's not really defined as public because it's public money in it.
I could qualify. I, I would agree with most everything, Chad, but from when we went back and researched it and talked to some of the largest general contractors who build these projects for us, as well as construction managers who manage a lot of the off-site improvements in the surrounding communities, the disparity between prevailing and non-pervailing wage related to work in the right-of-way is not as large as, we're not experiencing that great a disparity of 10% to 20%. As it relates to the work, operating heavy machinery and much more sophisticated, that disparity is, is very small, if and any. The disparity for us has come in when you get into a little bit more unskilled labor, and that's related to landscaping and some of the subcontract work related to that, you will see a disparity because the training and qualifications necessary to do that work aren't nearly as specific and, and as intense or needing that much training. So I might, I would disagree a little bit with what Chad just summarized right there at the end, because we're just not seeing that, and I went back and double-checked. Again, we're, we're building four or five million square feet of product right now, and that's, that's where I'm getting that basis. Thank you.
Kevin? Robin?
The study that was done with the economic impacts, was that prior to the restrictions we're under right now, the pandemic restrictions, or was it right when it was beginning? When was that done?
Yeah, that was, we employed and contracted to do that February and March, and then the results were put together in April. So yes, those were pulled on averages from years before and surveying a lot of different municipalities, you know, throughout California and parts of the US and the Southwest region.
Okay, and so your estimation of the extended amount of time that we've been dealing with the impacts of this, do you see a lot of fluctuation in those numbers? Do you see them holding steady, a small decrease, a lot, you know, where do you see those with your experience?
Yeah, I'm going to, what I'm about to say, I'm, I hope is very couched in a lot of humility. There are people who are suffering. I'm not in the hotel business. I'm glad I'm not in the hotel business right now, it's a tough business to be in. I'm not a retailer. There are people hurting and really needing jobs. I talked to a property management company today who manages office buildings, high-rise office buildings. A lot of their tenants are working from home and not coming back. All that said, industrial right now is ridiculously busy. We are all sheltered in place, staying at home more, we're buying more goods and services online, we're buying them on, you know, our computer, I don't know about your house. I got boxes showing up each and every day. My wife rarely ever goes to the mall anymore. We're seeing a generational shift in how are people hurting and really needing jobs. I talked to a property management company today who manages office buildings, high-rise office buildings. A lot of their tenants are working from home and not coming back. All that said, industrial right now is ridiculously busy. We are all sheltered in place, staying at home more. We're buying more goods and services online. We're buying them on our computer. I don't know about your house. I got boxes showing up each and every day. My wife rarely ever goes to the mall anymore. We're seeing a generational shift in how our economy works. We just started construction on a 1.3 million square foot building in the Central Valley. We're negotiating a lease for a 3 million square foot industrial facility in North Las Vegas right now. I, I wish I could say, I predicted it, saw it coming, had a crystal ball. Again, with all the humility I can express, industrial is the new retail. There's a lot of activity surrounding that. We're buying, we're all buying differently. And so to answer your question, there probably are some adjustments and differences here. We only incorporated about 10% of the square footage would be point-of-sale, purely e-commerce and being able, so we tried to be realistic and very conservative in implying, you know, some of the assumptions here. We fully intend to start construction in the spring. There's that strong a demand for this project.
Okay. And then Andy, from your perspective in those numbers, do you think they're conservative? Do you think they're in the ballpark? Your professional opinion?
So, so.
It quantified, but as far as the analysis that went into how this would specifically impact us, tax base, whether it's property tax increases, those are real numbers that are based on the value of the proposed improvement. The numbers that pretend to sales tax, as he pointed out, are numbers that are based on what portion of the development is going to be potentially used for point-of-sale. As far as the general, general fund impact, which are the numbers that we can say has direct impact on city tax revenues, those numbers are fairly conservative. Where we had occasions to disagree, we did and discussed with a consultant, a very reputable consultant, a national company based throughout the U.S. and they made changes after we had those conversations. So I'm very comfortable as far as those, those numbers that impact.
Okay. Thank you.
Greg?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening.
Good evening.
Couple of questions and a couple items I'd like you to address. I think more for the public at this point. And then if the mayor would like, I, I have a couple more asks and then some further discussion. When you showed the chart of, well, let me back up a little bit. Your, your previous comments to Councilmember Grunmeyer regarding industrial construction, I concur with you 100%. Beginning of the year, it was, I'm a little worried here. And, but today, it's on fire. And it's, yeah, and it's going to stay that way for quite a while, I believe. Your chart, when you, we were talking about graduated income in construction jobs and approximately a little over 1,200 construction jobs will be created by this project. And just as a clarification, that, that is not 1,200 workers onsite every day. That is going to be spread out over all the phases of, of the project.
Correct.
But in relation to that, could you address, and it's primarily for the neighbors and the neighborhoods, okay, that how we're going to mitigate traffic congestion during the construction process and then what we did, staff, council and, and, and your company, how we looked at mitigating traffic congestion overall when the project's complete. If you could just touch base on that just a little bit.
Cut me off anytime because there's a lot to that question. So.
Briefly, how's that?
So from the very beginning, I mean, we have had a lot of conversations up and down staff, city leadership and various citizens. We heard loud and clear, there is congestion along Second Street, especially during peak hours and First Street as well. We heard that loud and clear. As you can see from our orientation, when someone looks at the details of the site plan, there is no driveway access of any kind onto Pacific, the western boundary of the property. And there's no driveway, even for emergency access up onto Second Street. First Street is very limited. And the only reason there's a little bit of access down there is because there's a proposed commercial area that does have a little more ingress and egress, much more turnover of people coming and going. And that's, that's always been a priority for the city to try to generate the revenue from those related services being provided. So the majority of all our ingress and egress is on Mountain. And we're trying to do everything we can to facilitate and, not pressure, help make it as easy as possible for someone to head south on Mountain or, you know, come up from the south to enter into the project. Because our main point of ingress and egress of the project is midway along Mountain, trying to pull any and all trips away from Second Street. The traffic impact analysis, which is a very large significant component of the overall environmental impact analysis for this project required under state law under CEQA, identified the need for traffic signals at Second and Mountain and First and Mountain. Those are going to be installed. We also felt, and the traffic impact analysis didn't quite warrant it, but we volunteered to put another traffic signal in midway at our main entry there along Mountain. To, in our humble opinion and according to our traffic experts, it would further slow down the speed, facilitate good flow up and down Mountain since that's our primary means of ingress and egress, and really help facilitate that and drive the level of service at major traffic impacts in and around the project to very acceptable levels. Trying to think, is there anything else maybe you want me to touch on?
Partially on that is that, one of the things I think with your study and what, what we wanted to do with staff was minimize traffic impacts to the neighborhoods, to the residential areas and try to drive that traffic like you talked about on Mountain, but also to get it to Hamner Avenue, to get it to the freeway.
Correct.
And try to, that's kind of where I wanted to, if you had any comments just on that, but it was to do the best we could to minimize any traffic impacts, like I said, to the neighbors and the adjoining neighborhoods.
Yeah, the road, well, predominantly on Pacific, the road improvements, this project's not going to benefit from them.
That's correct.
We're not going to have any access over there.
I remember I was talking about that.
Yeah, quite a bit. And so even when we're building the project inside the perimeter, there's no impacts to the residents over there until we actually get over there to do those road improvements and that perimeter improvement. There won't, the only construction related trips will be to install the improvements. There won't be anybody from our project really even using those roads after they're built. So that, that'll be very nice, neat and provided, you know, very nice aesthetic, you know, appearance as well on that side. Second Street, again, obviously there will be a very limited, if somebody will come out of Mountain and maybe work their way back and maybe want to go down Second to River and maybe go home that way. But again, the large predominant percentage of our trips won't go that way. So Second and Pacific will be improved by our project, really not with a whole lot of direct benefit for our people working there.
Correct. And if I may, that, and I don't want to be political about this, but I think it's that residents need to understand in a sense that how much work that staff and council members and yourself put into, put into this project and, and other projects that the amount of time, the hours, the days, the weeks of meetings and communications is incredible and it's just not a part-time job for us.
No.
And I'll kind of like leave it like there's a lot of work that you don't see behind the scenes. And, but with that, over this period of time, I wanted to let you know personally that I've really enjoyed working with you and negotiating with you. And we've both squirmed at times, okay, to say the least. But I enjoy that, okay? And maybe at times you have too. But I have one more ask of you, okay?
I've been all ears all along.
Yes, you have. And, and this may seem, it's not silly, but Berwin's going to understand, Kathy's going to understand. Previous council member said that, you know, at, at the end of all these negotiations that we have on whatever project we have, that don't forget the animals, don't forget the horses. Okay? So my, my ask of you is related to condition 28, which is signage that you agreed to on, you know, like dust control, you know, your personal phone number for complaints on noise.
Or at least my project managers.
There you go.
There will be a number that someone can call.
That's right. And, you know, those considerations and then obviously with your construction entrances that, you know, hard hats required, safety this, safety that, that I would like to ask you to also add a statement of fact to be aware of equestrian activity and the propensity of how horses can be so reactive. Because there's a lot of people that still ride around that area and it's more so. And so that anybody working on the project or driving to the project to and from, that they, they stay aware of the equestrian activity.
Yeah, that will be, again, that's one of the things I've come to learn and get educated on, the importance. The, what was the number, 131 miles of horse trails in the community?
Ninety.
How many?
Ninety.
Ninety?
Approximately.
Okay, I thought I heard a different, but there's a lot of horse trails.
Depends who's selling that.
Okay.
Chad would know exactly though.
Okay.
Okay, there you go.
So there you go. Kind of blended in the middle, but.
That, that will be my, my, my last ask of you.
Okay.
And I'm sure you would be more than glad to accept that.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
We've come to recognize how important that is as part of this community. So.
No, I've enjoyed it.
Oh, it's, again, I don't want to get sappy up here or anything like that, but, you know, we build, we build a lot of projects throughout the southwest part of the United States. I, I do not get emotionally attached to really many projects at all. I've learned you, you can't do that. And I don't get overly emotionally connected to communities. It's business. We want to do the right thing in the communities. This has been a different process. I've spent a lot of time here. When I call and talk to my 86-year-old parents and they're checking in and I'm saying, well, are you on your way to Norco again? Yes, I am. Because it's a nice, long enough drive. I can connect with them. They're in Arlington, Texas, and they've heard a lot about Norco and I've shared a lot of things I've learned about this community. And we are going to do a very nice project. I don't know who of my team is going to build this. I don't know if I've already got somebody on staff yet because I want to make sure it's the right person who builds this project and understands this community, understands what I've committed to, what we've committed to, and what we're gonna, what I envision we're going to deliver here. We heard loud and clear, this project has been ready to go for 30 years and there's a reason why it's only now going to get going. And we want to make sure it's something the community's proud of, not just we're proud of. So I really mean that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Patrick, I really appreciate all the meetings we've had, discussions about this project. And I think what they started about three or four years ago when we first met up at Bob's Big Boy one morning and started discussing this, but it's a heck of a good project. It's gigantic. And one thing that I didn't catch clearly a while ago was the, the retail part. What did you predict in the retail coming out of that project there that on-site that would bring us in some sales tax? You had predicted something there a while ago.
Good question. I know it's in here. Let me see if I can find it quickly and not take too much of your time. For the convenience store, they are predicting total of, in the city, remember the counting numbers were a little bit larger, but I'm going to focus, we're just talking city. For the convenience store, they've projected 16 jobs. And then the surrounding retail, again, the ripple effect. So 16 onsite and then the ripple effect of retail-related jobs that'll benefit from this project being built and then operated. So neighborhood retail, 74, quick service restaurants, 39. So 113, 129, 129, if I'm looking at the right charts, recurring employment impact conclusions related to that retail, about 129 jobs.
Okay.
On an ongoing basis, just for the retail. If you'll realize, our retail component is, is about 13,000 square feet of the over 2 million onsite. And then the other, most of that retail-related job creation will actually be part of the ripple effect.
Right. Okay, thank you. Anybody else got any? Kevin?
So just really for anybody who's watching, I too have enjoyed you very much. But more importantly is that you've done everything we've asked. When we first met with you, Greg and I, we told you exactly what kind of buildings we wanted, how big they were going to be. Greg had a lot of good suggestions. You followed all of them as far as I can tell. I think this is one of those projects that I, there's a thing I believe in called Norco luck. Somehow we get lucky. I realize a lot of the people that's surrounding there are nervous, but I think that when we drove, I think those buffers are going to work really, really well. I mean, if we can create what we created behind Target Center.
Correct.
Only better.
Right.
I think it's going to be wonderful. I really like the idea of the, what Berwin came up with, the, the sort of sunken motifs on the sides of the buildings to break them up if we're able to do that. Just for clarification, the reason for the memorials was so that people 50 years from now could go, wow, that, that's something that came out of this project. The Gold Star family, that's to commemorate obviously Gold Star and Blue Star families.
Right.
The Kathy Azavito Memorial, it's not a memorial, it's a monument.
Okay.
That's basically to honor non, non-military heroes in our community, people that have done great things. And so that's something that will go on for 20, 30 years, 40, 50 years. The Isens, of course, is because without the Isens, there would be no Norco. And so rather than have something in the middle of a industrial center, we wanted something where people could see it. And so you did all of that. I think that you're going to make it beautiful. The 2 million is going to be greatly appreciated. I'm looking forward to spreading that around the community. The fees and permits, I still, I still can't believe how much you're going to pay us. That's, that's a good thing. I think the roads, I think that, that Chad was able to get you to do all of that upfront, I think is remarkable and appreciated. So, and then given the predictions for jobs in surrounding communities, the fact that, that the generation of jobs is, is going to be that significant is something that is extraordinary. And I'm very proud of the fact that that's going to happen. So I just, really that was for people watching, just to let them know that, and I appreciated Greg's comments, this has been hard work. And between you and Kathy and your staff, it's been pleasant. My dearest hope is that when it's finally built and I drive by and I'm, you know, in my wheelchair living at the corner of Second and River, my hope is that I drive by and say, that's exactly what we were promised. So that's all I have to say. I thank you very much. And with that, I will make a motion.
One, one comment.
Sorry.
We've got other things on this.
Okay, all right, yeah.
Make a motion.
I'm gonna, Patrick and Chad, I'm going to piggyback a little bit on what Greg said. Even though we don't have any grades there, could you? Even though we don't have any grades there, could you put down on there, no Jake breaks? No operation Jake breaks in that area?
Okay.
Yeah, you can sign it. I know the guys are doing, but it's one of the things that they do. But I'll have to reiterate what the mayor said and what Kevin said. Since we met at that breakfast that morning, Aaron, Bob's, that's been, it's been almost five years, been a pleasure to work with. And I really was impressed when you took over up there off of Town and Country and put that together and how much you did over there. So hopefully we can have a better one over here, so.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, now we're gonna open the public hearing. Do we have any emails or anything on this, Madam Clerk?
Let me just update and make sure we don't have anything that's come in. We have no public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion and action. Kevin, you're just gonna make a motion?
Before I do, I wanted to make sure that we got a couple of, I'm sure you all got them, a couple of letters from the Blue and Gold Star Mothers. And I'm not gonna read them, but they got wind of this and so I spoke to them a little bit and I said, you know, "Send something in." They wanted to speak, but for them, one of the nice things about the Blue and Gold Star, the Gold Star family proposal is that it gives them someplace to go where they can honor their children. And you should get a copy of both of these letters, they're quite moving. So with that said, I would like to make a motion to approve this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have one more comment, but I'll second Kevin's motion, but can I make a comment first?
Yes, sir.
Not only thanks to Patrick, with all of this, Andy?
Yeah.
You put an incredible amount of time into it and so I want to thank you. John, you did the same. And all of staff, but also all our commissions that reviewed this project. So just thank you all for all your hard work. Now I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, please vote.
Not yet.
Oh, we gotta re-
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Norco, California approving the development agreement between the City of Norco and Caprock LLC for development of the Palomino Business Park, 116-acre project area of four phases with 2,050, excuse me, 2,050,000 square feet of new building space with up to 35 industrial office buildings and three commercial buildings. Site plan 2017-15, specific plan 90-01, amendment 14, CUP 2019-11, TTM 37-681. That's the longest title of an ordinance that I've ever read in my life.
I was trying to see if he was awake. Okay.
Ready to vote?
We'll vote now. If John's okay, we'll vote now.
Councilmember Grumeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Hanna?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous, thank you.
Thank you very much. Patrick, thank you, Kathy. Thank you, guys, for all the hard work you've done with us, it's been a pleasure and everything. Okay, with that, we have the City Council, City Manager and Staff Communications and Todd, since you're the new guy on the block, I'm sure Newton's got more questions for you, you'll be the first speaker. Don't be nervous.
Thank you again. All right. What I'm here to do is to provide some information in regards to some concerns within Landscape Maintenance District Two. I provided lots of information here. Initially, some of this will be just some recap. District Two was formed in 1999, 219 parcels. At the time, prior to last year, the stuff included inside the district was landscape maintenance, trail maintenance, water and utility to obviously sustain those observations and supervision and administrative overhead. As of, I believe it's April of last year, post the 218 hearing, we are currently maintaining trails, providing observation and supervision, administrative overhead, and we are also maintaining and watering only Hidden Valley Parkway. And I have maps and pictures, so a lot of this I'll show you. A little bit of this is recap, I kind of touched base on this. Currently, to date, engineer report, the landscape surfaces within LMD Two include trail maintenance, tree skirt trimming over the trails, and again, not to reiterate, but irrigation and monthly maintenance on Hidden Valley Parkway. Areas with no water, no landscape maintenance are as follows. All the interior portions of LMD Two have no landscape maintenance and no water. The exterior slopes and parkways along Norco Hills Road do not have water or maintenance either. That's strictly the landscape portion. The trails are all being maintained. In regards to trail fencing, it is removed as it is deteriorated or damaged. It is not being replaced currently throughout the entire district. Trees and plant material are dying and will need to be removed. And the last portion of this is the fire hazard concerns with dead plant material on Norco Hills Road. There are two large slopes, and I have pictures to show you. And this is the direct effect of the hearing that was passed last year, or not passed last year. And on behalf of some of the homeowners, they have taken efforts to maintain and take care of their landscape in front of their houses. All right, here, the picture here, these are just, the red depicts the areas that have parkways and the red is obviously the areas that are off. The green, oh, I guess I'll go on this one. These are the, this is Hidden Valley Parkway, these are the portions that are maintained and irrigated. This is Norco Hills Park, this is part of the district. The large slope and the fire concerns that will, I'll show you pictures here real quickly, are here and then actually just over here, right before where Landscape Maintenance District Three begins. And please feel free to ask questions, I'm running through, I'm trying to provide you with information. There is a lot of information and I'm sure there's different ways to look at this, so I tried to put it together as easily as possible, just so we can review. When we prepared this for the 218 hearing a year plus ago, we broke the district into interior next year. And the main purpose for that was to be able to establish costs for different parts. Do we want to leave Norco Hills Road on? Do we want to have Hidden Valley Road? You know, so we broke it in, down into square footage. So that's kind of how we've come up with some of these figures. The two, oh, here, I gotta go back. Get myself up. The two main factors are the water and the maintenance. Those are the largest costs associated with the concerns from the 218 hearing. Currently, we have three water meters that are in use. So there's a charge for those, we obviously paying for the water. Two of those are for Hidden Valley Parkway, and I can even go back, but, I went all over the place, apologize. Two water meters, one for here, one for here, and then we also have one, I'm sorry, one that's still operational up on the top portion of the map. All the rest, there are eight more water meters that are currently turned off. Just some facts for you. This year, we're budgeted to spend approximately $23,000 for water. The maintenance, landscape maintenance portion is 16,000, that is predominantly Hidden Valley Parkway, and the trail maintenance is obviously throughout the whole district. And that's monthly, it's reoccurring, obviously, but a large portion of that is when we have the winter weather and we have crews out there consistently fixing and repairing. Yes, sir?
Our budget in landscape.
Yes, this, yes.
After third page.
Yes, this is currently what, and this number is derived from these three options and that's currently in the engineer's report. All right, so this is, I touched on this briefly, this is the other side, we have eight water meters that are off. And I broke this down just to try and give you ideas for numbers. Each year we progress, the numbers will increase. A lot of the information and stats that we had were from before the initial hearing, so these are updated numbers and it really breaks it down easy. There's a certain cost per meter, you times that by the number of meters you have, gives you a cost for the month, you times that by 12, that's, you're looking at your annual costs that we're required to pay to have water. And then we have a water fee and then we have a maintenance fee. So what I did, this is, if we were to reinstate water and maintenance, this current juncture, that would be, and these are very close estimates, but that would be a cost that we would incur to turn back on eight new meters. Not new, eight currently closed meters. Make sense? Maybe I'll go back. Are there any questions on that so far? It's, I'm kind of touching base.
I have to jump in a little bit.
I'm sorry.
Unfortunately, remember, this isn't agendized.
No, it's not. This is just information, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's what agendas are for, though, unfortunately, so that there really can't be discussion.
Oh, I apologize. Okay, just information. Fuel modification, these are the two slopes we discussed on Norco Hills Road. Since the irrigation and maintenance is off, we've dried out and there's a high fire hazard. What I'll do, I'll come back to this, I want to show you some photos. This is, these are photos that were taken last week. This is the large slope on Norco Hills Road, kind of on the top of the ridge, if you were headed towards the golf course. About 85, 9% of the material is dead and it is a fire hazard. This is a closer up, on the horse trail looking up. There's another view from the other side, Corona, looking towards Norco on the large These are pictures of interior, interior photos within the district, these are the parkways that were maintained but have not been in a year. So I just want to provide a picture, just a kind of description of what we are working with and daily discussions, myself and our LMD inspector are dealing with, with residents. The trees, some of the trees are still alive, some of the trees are dead. These are the bad, I did do, I did want to incorporate some good because there are people that are making an effort to take care of the areas that have been isolated and turned off. There are several different methods and ways people have addressed the landscape, but they are maintaining it. Here's a couple more. We have some zero scape type plants and then we also have the astroturf. There's another one that's not, not a city tree, but again, it's being maintained. And last slide, put together some options to take care of and modify.
Let's stop here.
Okay.
Let me make sure that I address John's concern. This was supposed to be basically, as you know, we've got complaints about the condition of the LMD Two. This is basically a staff update or information on what is going on, the conditions of things out there today. That is, we're not asking you to take any action. Just, it was precisely supposed to be mostly about you seeing these pictures and understanding what is happening there. And the idea is that if you want staff to bring back agendas for future discussion, any item pertaining to this LMD Two, given what it looks like right now based on the complaints that we've been receiving, then we'll be glad to agenda that and bring it back for potential city council action.
So I'll just leave it at that, then.
That's the attorney.
Can I make a motion to agendize this?
Yeah.
Yeah, I make a motion to agendize this at the next possible, I'm very concerned about the fire danger, so if we can agenda this at our very next meeting.
Well, just without a discussion, he is the, well, he's supposed to be our expert on, I apologize, I can't think of it.
Relighting landscaping district.
No, not for 218, it's a street, it's a line.
Landscaping's Relighting District, it's 1972 Act.
Thank you.
Andy, Dominic will be here anyway because he's gonna be part of the discussion that we're having for our special study session.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
We have a motion in a second.
Yeah, well, yeah, actually, it doesn't sound like it even needs to be agendized because it's gonna come back anyway.
When?
With this, at the next meeting with the study session.
Okay.
Okay, so cancel that motion in a second.
All right.
All right.
Oh, I thought you said it was gonna be part.
Okay, well, I made a motion to agendize it.
We have a motion in a second, please vote.
Councilmember Grumeyer? Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Hanna? Motion passes unanimous.
Okay, Robin, we'll start over here with you. Greg?
No further comments.
Okay, Dana?
No comments, thanks.
Alma? You never have nothing to say, Alma. Chad?
I just did want to inform the council and the public, we are planning to still have our dump day on, I believe it's October 5th, third, third?
Saturday.
Yeah, it's a Saturday, sorry, third, sorry, third. Getting council days mixed up. Third, so we are gonna, we didn't have the one in April because obviously COVID. We are gonna be trying to hold this event in the time of COVID. It's, obviously, we're not going to have the volunteers to unload your materials, so if you load it in your truck or vehicle, you are expected to load or unload that material and put it in the bin. So we are trying to hold that event because we've had many calls to find out if we would hold it, including shredding. So we will have shredding offer there and electronics recycling, so, but we will be very limited on assistance from volunteers or staff because we're trying to make sure we have the separation for COVID. We are putting out information about the event in the utility bills and on social media, but I did want to at least announce at this point that we are trying to conduct that event.
Metal?
What's that?
Metal.
Yes, that was acceptable. Thank you.
That's good, because I think they had a furniture sale about two weeks ago, because I have never seen so much used furniture, as I have seen the last two weeks piled in front of people's houses. I saw a public works truck picking up a bunch the other day, so if some newlywed needs furniture, they can go by and help theirself. But is there any way that, Andy, that code enforcement can knock on those people's doors where all this furniture's piled up in front of their houses and tell them to call Waste Management and have it picked up? Because this, it's all over town, there's piles of it everywhere. And it may not be their furniture, somebody might have dumped it there, but they need to have, they need to call Waste Management and have them pick it up on a Monday afternoon. But there's not just, may not just be one chair, there may be five or six items in there, I'm not kidding you.
It's a living room.
Huh?
It's a living room.
Yeah, it actually has been. Yeah, there actually has been. But I saw Public Works picking up a truck load the other day. And okay, with that, Lizette, you got anything to add? Sam? Lieutenant? Mark? Todd, you got anything else? Bob? John? Andy? Ted?
Yeah, I just confirmed Sheriff Bianca will be here the second meeting in October. That was the first date he could get us on his calendar. So he will be here and we will do the presentation at that time. We'll get it taken care of before that meeting. Sure.
Kevin?
Sorry. Andy, I'm getting some questions about emergency, what happens in fire, that kind of thing. We have a plan. Do you think, do you think that we could have a presentation on our emergency services, where people would go, Riley Gym? I mean, there's some confusion. Is there, maybe we could put something together in the next month or so just to kind of talk about what we have? I don't think most people even know about our emergency center and stuff. And if we could do something like that. The LMD, can we, we're gonna try to get people to do another 218 hearing. But the property, and I keep hearing about it from two people, the property in front of the reservoir, if we can get that taken care of, it's been months. And I know COVID, and I totally am not, I'm not blaming anybody. But if we could set the example on that property, you know where the reservoir is? There's also two eucalyptus trees that apparently are not getting water. And if we can check to make sure that they're getting water because they're starting to break off pieces and things like that, so it's, get health and safety. And then when Congressman Calvert was here, we talked to him about the high transmission lines that are gonna go through the river. And he had said that he would not be in favor of letting them go through the federal parkland. Can we do a follow-up on that and find out if, just keep it on his radar as they begin to make those moves to, I still have hope that we'll be able to stop that. I mean, I'm working with the Riverside City Council. I've got a couple of them that are now starting to go the other way. Because all that would take is a vote of that city council, and that project's dead going through there. And they're getting a lot of pushback from La Sierra. But if we could follow up to find out where they're at with that. I mean, I realize that there's a few out there that think that that project's a done deal. But there's still a whole bunch of hoops that need to be jumped. And if we can put fire in those hoops, it might stop them. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, and I have nothing. So with that, we're adjourned.